Okay, welcome everybody to the candidate forum for the Board of Trustees. And as Hall said, we'll follow a similar format. And we'll start with Bill for the first question. We'll move our way down to Nassim and then we'll go virtual with Mohammed. And then we'll flip that around and we'll switch it up a little bit for question three and four. So the first question, in the Aaron region, do you feel that parties should be able to receive transfers of IPv4 address blocks if they only intend to use them to lease to others?
So I actually feel that we need to deconstruct this question down and really understand what it means to say only intend to use them to lease. Because we could argue that many organizations lease or already have certain relationships with the way that they establish IP addresses. And so, you know, within our industry, I think the intent of this question was to say, should we enable organizations to finance or otherwise provide financial abilities to have that as their primary purpose of business? This goes back to the whole discussion in the early days of the Internet. You had a physical path like copper, fiber, and a virtual path that was IP addresses. And should that be required as what was the purpose of an ISP? And what we found is we have an evolving market that's evolved over the last 10 years. You have certain organizations that have large amounts of capital to be able to go and purchase numbers on an open market. And then you have other organizations that can only afford to purchase numbers for certain products if they can pay for it on, say, a monthly, quarterly, or annual basis. And so within that, I would say that we want to provide fairness to all parties, all members, to be able to enable them to get the numbers they need to facilitate their business. And as an organization that enables that, we should at least provide an ability to think outside the box and understand what that means in regards to how we keep the Internet growing and stable and secure.
I think that this question is a little bit loaded in that this is a question that ultimately ought to be answered by the community and the members via the policy development process. As a board candidate, I pledge to you, the members, to make sure that there are appropriate risk and governance guardrails around existing and future policy proposals. But let me talk about the elephant in the room here. IP addresses are expensive. The free pool is empty. Are IP addresses just for organizations that can be, can pay cash on the barrelhead? There is no pay-as-you-go method at this time. And I think when I talk to members, when I talk to people in the community who aren't members, that that's a problem that we're going to have to solve if we want to serve our constituency well. And so I ask the usual people and the unusual people, the people who have written policy proposals in the past, and the people who are thinking about writing policy proposals in this area in the future, to bring us some good ideas. Thank you.
Thanks, RS. I think my answer to this question is wholly in line with what the first half of your answer was, RS. People will look at me and say, hey, way to go, Sandoferd, way to sit on the fence. But I believe that's, as somebody who's on the board and is a board candidate, I believe that is the answer. My opinion of whether or not IP addresses should be able to be leased, or whether or not organizations should get, be able to receive transfers if their sole intention is to lease, doesn't really matter. It's a question that needs to be taken up by the community and the members. Policy needs to be made one way or the other. And our role as a board is to ensure that the policy development process gets followed. And, you know, that's basically my answer. I don't have a personal preference. I like to see IP addresses get used. And we'll leave the community and the members best to decide whether or not that's the right way to go. It's irrelevant to me as a board member.
So I think you're hearing similar answers here in that this is a loaded question in some respects, and that IP addressing is expensive. And as a community, we need to figure out how to solve that. I mean, if Aaron had a huge influx of money, it could buy up the address space out there and then fairly distribute it, and we don't need the waitlist and things like that. But that's not reality. The reality is, this does exist. And until there's policy put together around it, guardrails for it to make it fair, and attention made at bringing down some of the costs to smaller organizations and things like that to get access, the more ubiquitous access for everybody, it's going to be a challenge. And so as a community, we all need to work at that. And that's not just transfers with the intend to lease, that's across the board for this. It's, you know, as you've heard in this whole meeting, you know, there's address space not being used, how do we encourage the reclamation of that, or the, you know, the use of that? And that's been a challenge for Aaron and the other registers, and it still is. And it's getting bigger as a challenge in these days because of the length of the waitlist and the problems, and quite frankly, the money involved. So that's my answer.
I think what's interesting is these questions came from you. So, you know, the process that was used was, you know, a number of questions were submitted, and then priority was given to them, and the surviving questions are the ones we're addressing. And this is one of them, and it is probably more policy-directed. That's why I think what you've heard so far from everybody is, the expectation as a board member is the policy recommendations come from you. And we would then, you know, look to see the AC ratify it, ensure the process is followed, and the board then would adjudicate it or implement it, or ensure at least the CEO implements it. I'm not going to part from that. I mean, certainly, that's the right structure and process. But this particular topic, I think, is just trying to, maybe the intent behind it was to figure out, are we prejudiced in this space? Do we prefer to allow a company whose business is a leasing company? Or is it somehow trying to figure out, are you a broker? And does that impact what your position on this might be as a board member? I don't know. I don't have any of those conflicts. And, you know, I would certainly look at this as, you know, from a pretty objective position of, what does the community want? Does this disenfranchise, you know, different members of the community who have a different business case than others? Is it, you know, general consensus that we should go that way or not go that way? That's how I would look at this. Thanks.
So I think so far, you've heard a lot of policy considerations, and I agree about the role of the board. From a first principles perspective, what I think is really important is maintaining an accurate registry and, you know, being, I guess, the transfer process ensures that there is an accurate registry, and the user is scrutinized to make sure that they meet whatever the standards are. So if changing to a leasing scenario allows for those two things to happen, I think that leasing would enable small companies to afford an asset that they wouldn't otherwise be able to do it. But, you know, the appropriate processes need to be in place to ensure that the basic principles are followed.
Thanks, Nassim. And we'll now move to our virtual candidate, Mohammed.
Yes. So my response to this question is, lease should only be permissible to the extent when some organization which has an assignment and they don't, no longer need the assignment. So if that organization is grant with the fee, with the registry, it can, through a procedure that we can establish through a policy at the registry. So it can, through a procedure, then transfer it to an organization that has an approved assignment of IP address. And because of the scarcity of assignable address, it is still waiting for such allocation. So this policy can also eliminate the warehousing of IP blocks, and it can also enable the organizations to rotate the IPs among the organizations that need it. And they could be the corporate bodies, or they could be the ISPs, or some other organization. So I think it should be permissible only to this extent. But only the transfer of IPv4 blocks just for the purpose of leasing it, I don't think that it is a good thing, and it should be discouraged.
Thank you, Mohammed. So we will move to the next question, and Mohammed will start with you for this one. The question is, no organization is perfect in its operations. How would you make Aaron's operations, both the good and the bad, more transparent to
Should I start?
Yes, please, Mohammed.
Okay, okay, okay. So when it comes to the operations, we need to make the process of IPv4 blocks allocation fairer and more transparent. And we also need to enforce compliance to discourage IPv4 warehousing. So IPv4 quota should be specified for corporations, and fair and transparent audit should be conducted for the enforcement of quota and the release of unused IPv4 blocks to ISPs. And further, today's Aaron should also focus on contributing to training and understanding and general capacity building, and enhanced reach to the Internet around the world. So to achieve this, we need to establish collaboration with our members, and we should motivate them that they should introduce all those subjects that are part of the Aaron's mission into their training and capacity building system. And they should also educate their own staff. And we also need to motivate the Internet users, and we also need to educate them. So we can introduce all these initiatives, and I hope that this will improve the operational efficiency and the credibility of Aaron.
Thank you, Mohammed. Nassim, we'll move on to you, and then we'll work our way down to Bill.
Sure. So, agree, no organization is perfect. And I think this morning, one of the speakers said, some policies work and some don't. And so you work through them and you try and make them better. We also heard from the intellectual property bar this morning that the failure of registrations on reassignments created difficulty with them trying to figure out where the intellectual property, how they could enforce intellectual property rights. So it's not perfect, but I think that Aaron does a pretty good job in terms of engaging with its stakeholders and listening to them, and putting a lot of information on the website as a newcomer to the organization. I've learned a lot over the last few weeks. And so I think generally, as long as the organization is willing to listen to its stakeholders and continue to improve, I think that's what they can do. Perfection is not something that's easy to achieve.
In preparation for this, I looked what communications Aaron provides today to its membership. And there are several things that I think are good to look to when trying to understand how is the organization operating, what metrics may make sense to provide some sort of context on its effectiveness. There's, you know, annually, the strategic plan is published, membership gets that. There are quarterly reports that the CEO and the senior team provides to the board. And there's an annual report that goes out. So these are definitely things to look to. And in those, right now, it reads mostly like activity reports. Here are the things that are happening, here's what we've accomplished, here's what we achieved, and here's what we think we're going to achieve next, right? So it's not really providing an objective metric to those things, it's really just a reporting of these things. So perhaps that's the first place to look. And this would be, you know, something for the board to take up with the CEO on what kind of metrics can be created around various activities and objectives, and then finding a way to maybe integrate that into the existing communication channels. I guess one of those is just the regular blog updates. So when they're out of sequence or out of cycle communications, you see that happen on a regular basis, at least monthly, there's something coming up through the blog. So the vehicles are there, perhaps there's some layering of metrics to put on top of it, and that would definitely be something the board could do in concert with the CEO. Thanks.
I actually did a lot of what you just said in terms of looking at what's out there. And, you know, as a member organization, there is a lot of data out there. And one of the things when you run operational organizations is constant review of what you're doing and what your policy is, and what metrics make sense, what's helpful, what's useful, what's, both shows the good and the bad, but also the trends and things like that. And so a constant review of that. But one of the other important aspects that you just touched on is, you can layer this stuff into the toolsets that you already have and into your methodology for dealing with things. And so each iteration gets more data without it being a big burden and cost. And one of the things running an organization, you've got to be aware that, you know, you can ask for all the data in the world, it may be expensive or difficult to get to. So you, so taking a regular approach of reviewing and looking both at the method of operation and how things are being done, and adding more and more sort of each cycle is a very good way to get more transparency, more data out there for everybody. But one of the other things I would ask is, is there data that you all would want to see that isn't out there? Because you can also target, you know, to get data. But I think that I would love to see, you know, a regular process of deeper and deeper, more interesting data. There's already a lot out there, though.
Yeah, when I was reading this question, when it was presented to us, I was caught at sort of the generality of the question, and where it just talks about Aaron's operations. And there's many types of operations in an organization like Aaron. There's the business operations, the financial operations, the technical operations. And, you know, I think the answer can be different for all of them, and the question didn't really specify on any particular one. So I tried to come up with an answer that I thought might be applicable across the board. And I think that answer is, is that the organization's position on transparency, regardless of financial, technical, et cetera, should be to be transparent in all cases except for when doing so is harmful to the organization. So if there's data or information that we have, whether it be of a technical nature or a financial nature, or anything else, and the disclosure of such isn't harmful to the organization in terms of its cybersecurity, in terms of its HR recruiting efforts, or whatever that case might be, I think that the answer is to choose transparency whenever possible.
Thank you, Bill. It'll come as no surprise that my response to this is very much echoes of my other colleagues up here. We collect data that we think is going to be important. We publish it on a cadence that we think is appropriate. I think it's important to close the loop on that and make sure that it is what the members think is important, and that we are fully covering what's expected to be collected, what's expected to be published, publishing to the maximum extent that we can without causing risk to the organization by divulging things that we oughtn't, and on an appropriate cadence. But there's a second layer to this, which is making sure that the information is easily findable, and making sure that there are easy ways to find where we put things even when it's not quite clear what it's called. We shouldn't be falling back on Google. We should have centralized repositories for all of this data that we collect and publish, and make sure that it is easily available to all stakeholders who might want to look at it. And that's as important a part of the transparency as what we collect and publish.
So as I look at this, the thing that comes to mind the most is really the adage of garbage in, garbage out. If we're not getting the right data to put into this reporting that's made available for the community, then what we're going to get out of it is not going to be something that's going to be useful. Aaron already provides an incredible amount of data, as we've been discussing. And within that data that's provided, I think they do a pretty good job overall. But within that, it would be helpful from an organization and definitely from a board perspective to make sure that we have the frameworks in place for appropriate goal-setting, targets, key indicators, to make sure that the information that's going into those reports is both the information relevant to the organization and relevant to the community. And all of these should have feedback loops. Because transparency without accurate data isn't really transparency. And so, you know, with that, I would say, we should be transparent where we can. We should be transparent where the legalities and confidentiality or other harmful things the organization prohibit us from being transparent. And those should only be not transparent when it's truly vital to the organization to do so. Secrecy has no purpose here, and especially in a community bottom-up organization, I think that it's very important to have transparency throughout all aspects of operations, from finance, technical, legal. You know, we saw a presentation right before this that was incredible from a transparency perspective, because many organizations would wait until something else happened. And so with that, I think that it's just important to maintain that commitment to the community to always be transparent.
Thanks, Bill. Okay, our next question, and I think for the order of this one, we'll start with Bill this time, and then we'll move down to other Bill. And then we'll switch over to Hank, and then we'll finish up on screen.
I think he means me to you, but...
Yeah, we'll start, that's Bill, Bill Sandoferd, yeah.
I go by Bill, he goes by Billy.
Because we'll call you Billy for the duration. Roughly 6% of Aaron's budget in 2022 is earmarked for travel meetings. In the pandemic, we learned not all interactions could be replaced virtually, however, many, many could. Given the pandemic virtual experiences, what strategy should Aaron have on evaluating what travel brings good value for cost to the organization and the community?
Yeah, this is a great question. I thought a lot about this. I think the answer is that different interactions that we have with people sometimes require different ways in that we have those interactions. We had to learn very quickly in the pandemic ways to have all of our interactions virtually. And we were able to learn that some of those worked well, and they were types of interactions that could continue once the pandemic came to an end. And we realized that some of those didn't. There's just some times when you need to be face-to-face, you need that more intimate interaction with people in terms of reading their expressions, reading the way the conversation's going. And then quite frankly, you know, we can sometimes just get more out of the social interactions with people and whatnot that leads to better meetings. So in terms of a strategy for evaluating, you know, we need to look carefully at all of the different types of things that we do, look at the experiences that we had throughout the pandemic as to what worked and what didn't work, input policies in place to allow for virtual experience in the areas where it worked, and continue differently in areas where it didn't.
I did a little bit of research, and the number that everybody's wondering about for context here is 8.5, which is the percent of our 2019 budget that was dedicated to travel and meetings. About 5% for travel and about 3.5% for meetings. We had our hand forced for doing virtual, all virtual meetings. And we found out it was better than nothing, but not as good as in person. Yet, having a really good hybrid story increases our constituency. Not everybody can afford to travel to an Aaron meeting, not everybody can get the time to come to an Aaron meeting. But these are people whose input and participation we value nevertheless. When I look around this room, I see a whole bunch of people that I saw at the social last night. You don't get that in virtual environments. When I look around this room, I see somewhere around a quarter or a third that I actually have in my phone. You don't get that magically overnight, and it doesn't happen over Zoom. So when we think about our duty to the newcomers to this community, the new members in this community, the people who are building up those relationships, we want to be very careful to not let the fact that I can pick up my phone and text or call many people who've been around this community for a long time cloud our judgment as far as what constitutes good value for the cost for the organization and for the community.
So I don't think we, anyone debates the value of hybrid or virtual type experiences. I know we've all experienced different ways that, you know, we dealt with being a part. But within this question of what is the strategy that Aaron should have in evaluating travel, I think that what we really need to be thinking about is how Aaron brings value through travel, and whether it's members of the community, the staff, you should always have a purpose. And the strategy should be that the travel enables a purpose, and that purpose is the purpose that forwards the needs of our community, forwards the needs of interacting with other communities. And ultimately, we get value through that execution, in the sense of needless travel just to travel. Every organization is going through, you know, difficult times. We're hearing of economic troubles globally, we're hearing of organizations, large organizations, putting on hiring freezes. And we expect that travel budgets are going to be one of those things that are going to be attacked. And so with that, that's where you need a logic and you need a framework where you check boxes and you have diligence. And that diligence is important to make sure that we're doing what's necessary to be financially responsible, but also meeting the goals and needs of the organization.
Great. Hank, over to you.
All right. So you're hearing a lot of the same stuff here in that we've learned that some stuff works well over virtual, but there's huge value in the hallway conversations or the patio conversations and the social conversations that happen, and that relationship building that's very difficult to happen virtually. So that, I think you're going to hear, I think we're all in agreement on that. I think kind of the world learned that. And so an evaluation of which makes sense on what the goal is for Aaron is something that we need to put frameworks around and make a good judgment call for. But I would also point out that one of Aaron's challenges is and always has been getting more and more community involvement and to more and more reaches of its constituency. And so the more availability that people have to participate with the hybrid, with virtual, with other things, the better. So, but, so it's a twofold answer in that we need to put some smart, you know, policies around the evaluation, but we also need to keep driving for more community involvement. And how best to do that with our outreach and things like that, that we And how best to do that with our outreach and things like that that we've done is something that we need to, it's a constant work effort that we need to stay focused on.
I did some homework on this as well in preparation for the question. Looking back at the budgets for the last few years, it's pretty consistently around 6%. The budget goes towards travel and meetings. I did see it around 5% in 2021, no surprise there. But if you break it down further, about 2% of that, 6%, goes towards facilities like this, parties like last night. So it's the meeting component of it, and there's real expenses to hosting a meeting. And then the other 4% is the travel component of it. And if you think about that being split in half, there aren't the details there, but I'm now speculating based on my experience in other environments. But if you take about a half of that, that's really funding staff to be here to support the meeting. That's the executive team to be here to provide updates on what's happening throughout Aaron. That's having the board members travel to the meetings. It's having the AC members travel to the meetings. So there's a big expense associated with the meetings and having people come to the meetings. The remaining 2% is probably the question where I would focus this. And that's additional activities that Aaron has outside of the two meetings a year. And, you know, certainly one thing that COVID has done for, I think, a lot of people in society, we have this, I feel we have this view in the internet sector where we've been doing Zoom all the time, what's the big deal? But like the rest of the world is now realizing that, oh, there are things that can be done via Zoom or whatever other video conferencing platform you want to use. And I don't actually have to go. So target areas to think about. And this is really a dialogue to have again with the CEO. Are there expensive international trips where there's a two-hour meeting? Is it justified to drop $20,000 on going there when that could be probably a Zoom activity? If it's a bigger trip with a lot more detail than just a two-hour meeting, then maybe you have a different lens. But I think that's really the area to focus. And the dialogue between the board and the CEO can identify new criteria and, you know, what the best way is to implement them.
So having worked virtually from home for over 20 years, I'm a big proponent of online or virtual meetings. But I also recognize that in-person is important. And having traveled over a million miles on Air Canada, I've definitely used that as well. I think, you know, depending on the purpose of the meeting, depending on whether you're going in there to build trust to, because people's body language, you know, just getting to know people culturally. For example, going to Latin America, extremely warm people. They want to get to know you. They want to understand. They want to have a meal with you. So I think policies around what is the purpose of the meeting and who's going to be attending? Is building a rapport important? Or have you already met the people that you're meeting with? You know, those types of things have to be considered before spending $10,000 to our meeting. Sometimes it may be necessary, but many times it's not. But I think establishing policies and recognizing that there is real value and efficiencies in getting work done online. Thank you.
Thanks, Naseem. And we'll move to our virtual candidate, Mohammed. And could we just get a reset on the timer?
Yeah, so I'm participating virtually. So I will say that, yeah, virtual experience is a great thing. But depending on the nature of the meeting and the nature of the thing. So I think it could be something that is hybrid. I agree that COVID-19 has made us more productive and our boards, they have gone more strong and productive. And I was going through a research by McKinsey. And they also stated that during COVID-19, the performance of the boards increased to many folds. But I think, yeah, participating virtually or conducting the virtual meetings, it can also do another favor other than cost optimization. It can also reduce the carbon footprint. But I think if there is some kind of event that is a day long or two days long, so then I think there should be some, and not, there should be, but yeah, there must be in-person attendance of the participants. But if it is going to be even after a meeting, I don't think that in-person meeting will be a beneficial thing. So it should be something hybrid and it can reduce our time rather than spending the whole day. So we can just sum it up and we can complete our meeting in a few hours. So yeah, this is my response.
Thanks, Mohammed. Okay, that brings us to our final question. And I think we'll start with Hank this time and move down to Naseem. And then we'll bring it over to the side and Bill Sanford can answer. And we'll finish up with Mohammed. So the question, how should Aaron treat facilitators/b brokers? Should they be treated as important customers or just unavoidable parties involved in some transactions?
So again, this is another question that's interesting that it comes from the members because if the members want policy around it, they can propose it. But my opinion, step one is to recognize that transactions happen and they're happening. And good facilitators, I'll put that word out there, good facilitators, are there for trust in the transaction. They're there to help the transaction go smoothly for the parties involved. So a good facilitator will need a good relationship with Aaron for the Aaron region and the other IRs for their region. And so it benefits the facilitator, so I'm kind of flipping this around. It benefits the facilitator, if they want to be a good facilitator, to have a good relationship with Aaron and work with Aaron within Aaron's guidelines, with the documentation that Aaron requires and to make everything go smoothly. So I think Aaron's policies are pretty clean for these types of transactions. I don't think Aaron needs to necessarily treat the facilitators any differently, but having a good working relationship with them can help these transactions go smoother.
I think the unavoidable is an interesting key word in here. They are avoidable. You can actually transact and transfer without using a broker in the middle. But notwithstanding Hank's comments about adding a layer of trust and protection in the transaction, that I think has a lot of value. But I think the question's really asking about, should there be some qualification on brokers? Today, you know, there is a listing service. As a broker, you can put your name on Aaron's website. And thus, if somebody's looking to buy or sell IPV4 addresses, they could go to the Aaron website and go, ooh, look, there's a few choices. Let me call them up and see which one I like, right? So that exists. Should Aaron be in the process of putting some sort of value judgment on them? I don't know. It's kind of a slippery slope. There is, so that's really, you know, I think one aspect of the question. Another aspect would be, well, should they have a broader relationship than just being an entity listed on the website, perhaps? And perhaps the way to do that is, you know, there is this new premium support feature for, you know, members who have resources. Maybe there's a variation of that that can be offered to related parties who maybe don't have resources. Certainly, if it's a broker or facilitator that has resources, that's available to them today. They can be a premium support member. But some brokers don't necessarily take possession of the assets in the transaction. They just help connect the dots and the assets flow from the buyer to the seller or seller to the buyer, rather, yeah, through escrow. So, you know, maybe there's some value in having a premium support option for those entities that are transacting in that space. Those are my thoughts.
So picking up on what's already talked about, I think good facilitators can help Aaron in terms of making sure that people understand what the processes are and how to smoothly effect the transaction. So I don't think that Aaron should shut them in any way or treat them in any manner that's negative. But I think that, you know, if they're helping people to get through the process and smoothly transact the business, it might be more efficient for Aaron to have those good facilitators involved rather than not having them involved.
Thank you. That's you, Bill.
All right. Okay, I'm going to break this question down into a few parts. I'm going to start with the last part. And I'm going to say that without a doubt, our facilitators/b brokers in our community are not just unavoidable parties involved in some transactions. As Ron noted, they are very avoidable. If you have resources that you don't need anymore and you feel you can take them to market on your own, you can do that. If you need resources and you feel that you can find them on your own, you have ways to do that. But let's be clear, there's a lot of inactive or dead space out there in the internet. And there are facilitators in this room, on the stage in fact, who have done an incredible job of going out, finding some of these spaces and linking those who need to be able to use this space with those that have it, in some cases without even knowing they have it, and get that space in use on the internet. So I think our facilitators/b brokers are a very important part of our ecosystem. Avoidable if you want. How should Aaron treat them? I think Aaron should treat them just like every other customer that Aaron has. Aaron should take their calls, guide them through the processes if they need help, ensure that the policies and procedures are followed, and do what it takes to get these transfers done when all the policy implications of those transfers are met. And, you know, I like the fact that we have facilitators and brokers in our ecosystem. And I also like the fact that if you don't need them or want them, you don't have to use them.
I don't like the choices that I have here of important customers or unavoidable parties. This word is overused, but I'm going to use it anyway. The facilitators are our partners. They do an important job. They do multiple important jobs. Bill just talked about some of them, finding unused space or underutilized space. But that's not where the value stops. There is education. There is expectation calibration. No matter how transparent or good we make our policies, no matter how obvious we make it for how to navigate them, not everybody who has to interact with Aaron is an ISP or a hyperscaler for whom navigating the Aaron process means, oh, it must be a day that ends in Y. Doing that is a benefit that accrues directly to Aaron. We would need more FTEs and registration services if we had to hold people's hands through the process. Having facilitators in this ecosystem saves us money. So we should treat them as partners. I wasn't trying to suck up to you.
So as the sole facilitator, I think, on the stage, not all facilitators are created equal. Let's start there. As a facilitator on the board, I think that it's important to note that for policies to come to the board, it's very important to know about being open and transparent and recusing from certain of those issues. But that being said, within this, facilitators already have a relationship with Aaron. And that's through the facilitator list. There's a process that undertakes there. One can argue that we should consider other things to do with that list because sometimes that list provides a certain level of trust. Certain parties think that Aaron endorses certain facilitators, which is not the case. We should look at programs, and I think there are already programs being considered, to evaluate a minimum set of standards that should be met as an organization so that organizations can have greater levels of trust or at least be better bound to abide by community policies and Aaron policies. Others have already talked about the benefits of facilitators. But within that, I think partners is a good word because there is a symbiotic relationship that goes on with both vetting, custody of blocks, finding blocks, chasing down different parties that exist out there. And, you know, in the end, facilitators are a very important part of the ecosystem that helps to raise this. But as others have pointed out, we don't have a system that requires it. There's no regulatory framework or other things that enforce that. And that's a very healthy thing to provide choice for all parties out there. But the idea of the PSP program that was already mentioned is a fantastic way to, I think, better embrace facilitators perhaps in a different role than a customer, but definitely an important role within the ecosystem.
Great. Mohammed, over to you.
Yeah, so I will say that for us, the mission and values of Aaron, they are the most important things. So if, yeah, there are the facilitators and the brokers, so I think they should adhere to the values and the missions of the Aaron. And if they uphold all those values that also involve preserving the public good, so I think their role could be beneficial. But in past, unfortunately, there have been some things that the brokers, they wish to resell the IPv4 address spaces and begin participating in effort to amend the Aaron's policies to allow the sale of IPv4 address space. So I think the IPv4 addresses, so they must be held in good faith and in common. So they are not the property that can be sold. So we should allow the sale of IPv4 address allocation but only if the buyer can demonstrate the need for the address space. So Aaron can deal with IPv4 address space scarcity while maintaining control of IPv4 transfer. And it should definitely be under the purview of the Aaron. And it should not compromise the Aaron's values and missions and the public good. Thank you.
Thanks, Mohammed. And that concludes our candidate form for the Board of Trustees. I see that there's an any questions, and I'm not sure if there is a Q and A format.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, everyone, for your participation.
Thank you.